With, um, Raffet and Ronnie Shenandoah 100 Worcester Road. I think that's a continuation. Yep, come right up.
Hi, I'm Sandra Bacon. I did come with the homeowner last time.
Right.
He is away on vacation and we signed some papers saying I could speak with you again.
Excellent.
You know.
So I think the way we left it with you last time was that as it stood, we weren't gonna, it didn't look promising.
Right, there has been a new law passed in the state of Massachusetts.
Yeah.
So are you going to adhere to that law or allow that in Charlton?
So, I didn't even think that we wouldn't need to do anything if the law passed, that we would have to pass it or not. I see Mr. Meskis.
I'll wait my turn.
Well, why don't you, why don't you speak right now?
So, a new law, which is part of the housing bond bill fair housing package.
Right.
Has passed.
Yes.
And there is a section in that law that deals with accessory dwelling units allowed by right, both attached and detached.
Right.
Without any unreasonable regulation by the town of Charlton. So, we can't require a special permit for them as we understand the law right now.
Okay.
That law, or that provision of the law, takes effect February 3rd, 2025.
Okay.
The wrinkle to this is, is that this lot, which allows single-family homes.
Yeah.
Is a pre-existing non-conforming lot.
Yeah.
And how that comes into play is unclear to me at this time.
Okay.
So, my question, and I haven't had any, you know, all the lawyers and economic housing and development, all are struggling to understand the ins and outs of the law as proposed. And what if any case law or guidance is going to come out for this? The reason I'm hesitant, and I did speak to Ms. Bacon about the possibility of this law coming forward, is I did not know what form it was going to take. And if we did allow an expansion on this property, it would still probably require a special permit.
We don't know under what circumstance that is.
Right. So what I can say right now is, is that I don't know. If this was clearly a single-family home lot allowable that was of sufficient size and frontage.
Yeah.
I would say that the law says that we issue the permit for the ADU. But because this lot is not of compliant size and frontage, it is questionable about how that would be exercised.
Can you, in, if, if the petition wasn't made, and then they, in assuming that, that the new law covers this particular lot, they would be able to obtain a building permit by right without any further special permits or anything like that in February, correct?
I don't quite understand your question, sir.
So if, so if. If the petitioner hadn't come before us, you know, a month or two ago, asking for relief, and the law passed, the law doesn't go into effect until February anyway. So, there's no way that you would issue a building permit until that law went into effect in February, assuming that, that, that a permit can be issued. It's not, it doesn't go into effect until, what, February 25th?
February 3rd. So, you are, I, the way I understand what you're saying, you're asking is, is could I issue a permit now?
And the answer would be no.
And the answer would be no, because we are working under the set of facts that are before us at this moment.
Right, right.
And that whatever action this board takes is their discretion.
Right.
And then if, well, when this law takes effect, what action that may be needed then.
Right.
Has yet to be determined.
Yeah.
Now, its potential, and we're really cutting out into the hypothetical here, is that if a special permit was required because it was a non-conforming lot, I would think that the applicant could come back at that time because we would have a new set of circumstances.
Right.
And they wouldn't be prohibited by the two-year.
Right, and that's what I, that's what I would probably want to do, councilors, is that if, see if, you know, if, if the law allows him to get a permit by right, then there's no, a building permit by right, there's no need for us to do anything at all. And I don't think that, from my perspective, my position really hasn't changed between now and February, and I wouldn't want to vote on something and then find out four months later that, you know, might impact his ability to get a building permit going forward.
You know, we're happy to wait until that time.
Yeah.
But will the two years, because we've come before you and everything, can that be waived because of this new law?
I thought that was statutory.
So, so my understa-
Withdraw.
Well, that's, that's one possibility.
It could continue.
Well, you could not.
But it's a long continuance.
But the other, the other thing I see, and as I was trying to say, is, is that this would be a new set of circumstances in February. A new law that is sitting in the wings takes effect February 3rd.
Right.
Okay, so, I would have no problem going before the planning board and saying, please vote to allow the ZBA to take this up again if that additional action was necessary.
Right, but why, but, I mean, that's up to you whether, but if that's the case, yeah, I mean, definitely, yeah, that would probably fall under those guidelines if the planning board could do that, if that was the case. But I don't want to deny you and then turn around and then, you know, the planning board's like, wow, we don't want to do that, whatever. Send a no, I mean.
So, so, I think the two options are, is that the applicant can withdraw.
Yeah.
Or the board votes to make a decision. I don't think a continuance into February, which is an extremely long time, as you said.
It is.
You know, is the advisable action.
Yeah. I don't know, what do you think, counselor? You think it's better, you think the petitioner is willing to withdraw and wait until February?
Yes, as long as we don't, you know, we withdraw and come back.
Yeah, and I don't want to, like, have that two years even start running on you at all.
That's, that's great.
Yeah.
We'll wait.
Yeah, and if the law changes, we have to look at it differently, then we'll absolutely do that.
Sure.
No question about that.
No, so we withdraw, do we have to do that in writing?
Um, yeah, if you could just send Daleen something, you know, even if it's an email or whatever, but I'll just, we'll do an official vote, you know, just to kind of, there's a motion, the petitioner is going to withdraw, motion to accept a withdrawal, someone will accept that.
Motion to accept a withdrawal.
Second by Jason, second by Garrett. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay. So hopefully you can just get the permit in February and it's not an issue.
Good.
If not, we'll have to definitely revisit it under the new law and look at it under the new law.
We'll wait. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay, Edward Services LLC, please.
Good evening.
Good evening. Just state your name for the record, please.
Yes, I'm Calisto Burton. I'm the principal of Burton Engineering, and I'm here on behalf of Edward Services.
Yeah.
And I'm Henry Seminelli. I'm appearing also on the Edward Services.
Okay. All right, do you want to just tell us what you're seeking and why this board should grant relief from it?
Sure. So, we are looking at, at the property at 16 Sturbridge Road. There's a big building there, it's been abandoned for a while.
Yeah.
And we're going to convert that into a convenience store and a gas station.
Okay.
Okay?
Yeah.
So just a little bit about, I have an easel here with the building on there, but I just want to give you some statistics. It's a 52,000 square foot lot, and right now, 40,000 square foot of it, 76% is pavement or building.
Right.
Right? So what we're doing is we're putting a much smaller building and reducing the pavement. So, the total impervious cover is 24,000. So we reduced the impervious cover by 40%. So, we did that for a couple of reasons. One, there's an isolated wetlands behind the site.
Yeah.
So we're creating a 25-foot buffer to that isolated wetlands. And then there's bordering vegetated wetlands across the street. It's across the highway, but it still impacts the site, and we're putting landscaping along the front. So, this site is all pavement right up to the highway. So what we created was two driveways and a 25-foot wide buffer, planted buffer along the, the street between the two driveways. Right? So, when we do a service station, you have to do a couple of things. One, you want the customers to come in and face the building. So when they come in from the, from the west and they come into the site, they face the building. Right? We could have turned the building around, which we looked at it, but that put the whole canopy up in the front yard. We have a couple of hardships on this site. One, I mentioned the wetlands, so we pulled the building and everything away from it. But also, there's a wellhead area here.
Okay.
And you can see this circle on the drawing.
Yeah.
And the tanks can't be on that side of the wellhead, it's got to be on this side.
Okay.
So when we lay this out, and this is where I'm, I'm coming to why we have, are in this position, we have to put the tanks somewhere on the east-west side of that line.
Yeah.
So, you see, we're kind of limited on to where we could put the tanks.
Yeah.
So what happens is, we have the delivery truck come in, the front, park over the tr- the tanks and, and do its filling.
Right.
So, that's within 50 feet or 40 feet of the front yard.
Okay.
Right? So that's really why we're here. So, the, now, I, I just, I have here another drawing in the set with our turning templates, all the different movements. The loading zone is in the back of the site for the regular delivery truck, that's where the trash enclosure is.
Yeah.
But the fuel truck, you could see on this drawing, C 2.4, comes in, pulls over the tank field and goes out.
All right.
Now, there's a couple of justifications for this. I, I mentioned that we have the hardship with the, the wellhead protection area, the wetlands in the back, and where we can put the tanks. So that, that limits, and again, you, you got to have the building on the downstream side of where the cars come in. If the cars came in and the building were on the other side, it wouldn't work. So, I don't think this has any detriment to the public good, because one thing is when you bring the truck in and you keep them up front, he's not driving through the site. You drive through the site, you clip a car, you know, it's a big truck going through the site. Now, we have other trucks that go through the site, but this is the tractor-trailer truck coming through. Right? Now, the loading, they'll get about three, three loads a week.
Yeah.
They're there for 40 minutes, 25 to 40 minutes to deliver. So it's not that it's going to be there frequently, it's going to be just a.
It's not going to impact the road in any way?
No.
It's not, other vehicles coming in and out of the site, it's not in their way at all?
Correct. So you could see where the truck is parked, vehicles could still come in.
And they can still freely leave. If an emergency vehicle needed to come in, that's not going to impede.
Correct.
Emergency vehicles getting in and out of the property in any way?
Correct. They won't.
Okay. It's not like one of those McDonald's trucks that blocks, like, the entire drive-through?
No, see.
You can't, I can't get my McNuggets?
The first thing when you design a service station, and I've designed thousands of them, you know.
Okay.
Is that you got to get the truck in and out. And not screw up traffic. So that's why, that's one of the key things you design for.
Okay.
All right, so, that's why we're here, and I guess we're here because we have the two vehicle positions in the front yard too.
It's the parking setback.
Okay. Well, the parking, the cars are parked back sufficiently from the right-of-way line.
Okay.
So the car, the parking is, is back. It's just that we have, the unloading for the truck is at the front.
Yeah.
And then the first two positions where cars would fuel is within the 50 feet.
Within the 50-foot buffer?
Right.
Okay.
But again, we're, we're, we have the hardship where we're trying to keep away from the wetlands in the back and just positioning this pla- this on the site.
Okay.
And we didn't want to go too far to the west, because this is virgin area here, we'd be taking down trees and we got a slope.
Okay. That's part one of it. You have two parts, then you're looking for relief from sign?
Now, we, we don't need the sign variance.
Okay.
Okay, we, we got, there's a, a ID sign and a price sign.
Yeah.
And the price sign was approved by the planning board under a special permit.
Okay.
Okay, and then we have two building signs, a 50-square-foot sign on the side of the building facing the road.
Yeah.
And a 25-foot square foot sign facing the canopy. So that's because it's 50% of the main sign.
Yeah.
It's, it's permitted.
Okay.
So, we do not need a sign variance.
Okay. Does anybody have questions for the petitioner? Eric, Rob?
Still, I think, what is it that you're looking for?
Oh, we're, we're, we're loading within 50 feet of the front yard.
Any relief on that variance?
So we have a variance.
Okay, under that bylaw. Jason, you have any questions, comments?
I'm only curious why the bylaws says 50 feet, was there a reason for it?
I have no idea.
Especially in an industrial zone.
Yeah, if it's an industrial zone, and you think of big pride, big, big buildings.
Yeah.
Maybe, but this is, and again, this is not going to be a hardship, it's not going to really impair the zone or the ten of the zone.
Yeah.
Because it's only three times a week. And it'll probably be this time of night.
Right. Do you have anything that you would need to add?
No, he covered it.
Okay.
I, I, you know, you, you can't, an alternative would be to move, keep the tanks there, but move the, the fill area, and you just can't do that, you want to keep the shortest distance between.
Yeah.
The floor and the tank.
Okay, do we want to hear from, do you guys have any questions? Want to hear from the building inspector slash zoning enforcement officer?
I just want to clarify, it's the filling of the tanks and then also the first to fill zones for cars.
Correct.
That's seeking relief.
Mr. Meskis? Sorry?
That's all right. Kurt Meskis, zoning enforcement officer, building commissioner, if I may, usual.
Thank you.
Photo array.
Oh, yeah. This is good, this is probably what I should have done.
So as the applicant has indicated, they have been to the planning board, they have an approved site plan for the construction of this multi-island gas station at 16 Sturbridge Road. For some of us that remember it, it was the old AJ Pools. It's been a number of things since then, it's laid vacant for quite a while. And as shown on the, the aerial view of the first page, the pavement extends almost to the street. The reason the applicant is here, as he's mentioned, is, is that in the industrial general zone, there is a requirement that parking areas be located 50 feet back from the public right-of-way. And the, for reference, and I'm, and we'll get to the end of my stuff, the canopy line is 40 feet, so they're in the, in the no-parking zone. Followed by the aerial shot is the current building that is there. I think the town of Charlton would be happy to see that removed. For modern facility installed. To the east of this property is a dilapidated house and antique dealer, who's been there for quite a while. And to the west of the property is the old, an old state police barracks, which has been acquired by the property owner behind that facility. I provided a fold-out at the back here, which highlights the 40-foot setback, which is a building setback line, which they, and I've worked with the applicant and his designer to get the canopy to be behind the setback line, as it is a structure. And then the green line on there shows the 50-foot setback. So I don't see where this would be any, any detriment to the neighborhood. It certainly, as I've seen the renderings of the building provided in this permit application and knowing some of the other buildings, Mr. Wahib? Did I say that right?
Yes.
Mr. Wahib is done in the area, that it certainly would be a marked improvement to what's there now.
Okay.
It would be the only service station on the westbound side.
That's true.
For now.
For now.
That's, yeah, that's all the way to 84, now that you mention it.
Yes, yes, all the way.
I mean, I can't predict the future, but.
For now.
I said never for something.
Does anybody have any questions for the zoning enforcement officer?
Go through the MIPA application, let's take.
Anybody? Anybody?
Nope.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Do we have anybody, butters, that want to comment? Anybody? Persons of interest? Any comments, questions? All right, go, go ahead.
Just a small administrative matter, the, on our application.
Yeah.
The site for the deed is incorrect. It's, that is the deed to the predecessor of Mr. Wahib.
It's a prior record, yeah.
Right.
So Daleen, you just want to mark that in the, in the application, so if when we make, if we make a decision, that you, we have the right to.
It is the same property.
Right.
And I can give you the, I'll just hand this to you, you can write that down.
That's why he's here. He had to do something.
Okay. No other questions? Do we have anything from? Anybody from conservation, planning board, town accountant, clerk's office, selectmen, assessors, collector, tax collector, economic development, school committee, police, fire, border health? Anybody have any, from any boards or agents have any comments or anything like that? Gentlemen, do we have any more comments or questions or whatever? Do you want to make a motion to end the public portion of, the open portion of this petition?
Make a motion to end the public portion of this petition.
There's a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. I, I don't think this is an issue at all. The only thing that I would probably ask the petitioner is just for a matter of administrative purposes to withdraw the part of, the portion of the application, asking for relief from the signage. But other than that, I think, absolutely fine. If you look at the line for where they can do it, I mean, it's not, I think it's difficult for them to put tanks in a different spot altogether. Or it wouldn't, even, the thing wouldn't work out. It's definitely between the wetlands in the back and that, and that wellhead line, you know, I think that creates a hardship, that it's not going to impede traffic anyway, it's not going to impede emergency services if there's, you know, God forbid, you know, emergency on the site in some way of the property. I have no problem voting for this. I don't know what you guys think.
No, it's definitely a vast improvement.
Yeah.
What's there?
Our way, what?
Nothing.
Jason, Eric?
One more.
Everything's good. We would just ask that you withdraw the, the portion for relief for the signage, since it's all squared away.
Yes.
Just to kind of make sure that it's clean and it's not, there's no, there's no question that you, you're not asking for that.
Yeah, that can be done by email.
Yeah, if you just ask us right now, it's fine, and then we'll just.
We're asking. The portion concerning the signage.
Yeah, so there's a, a request to withdraw the, the, part of the petition that's seeking relief for signage, is there a motion on that? I want to make a motion?
I'll make a motion to accept the request.
To withdraw?
To withdraw the, part of the application.
Is a second on that?
Second.
Second remark, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
If we were going to vote to approve this, it would be, what? To allow, grant relief to allow parking and loading within the 50-feet buffer pursuant to Section 200, 4.2C, 2, for the reason that the hardship exists due to wetlands in the rear and within, in the, in the front and the.
Wellhead protection area.
Yeah, the well, and, oh, why can't I read this? The interim wellhead protection area, the, the tanks for loading and unloading, there's a limited spot for them, considering the, that, that area, which creates a hardship and excludes a large portion of the lot. Does someone want to make a motion on that?
Didn't you, I was going to second what you.
You don't have to make a motion, I'm the chair, you don't make the motion.
All right, so I have to make a motion, just.
To grant relief to allow.
Say everything you just said.
Parking and loading within the 50-foot buffer area.
Yes, parking, loading within the 50-foot buffer area. And because of the hardships that were mentioned, due to the wetlands, due to the wellhead, and.
It's, that's, that's, that's why it's due, but it has no impact on the community.
You're asking for a variance, though.
Right.
Right, so we.
It's the hardship.
That's the, yeah, the hardship is the fact that you can't locate those tanks in, in pretty much anywhere else, because the wellhead excludes, like, two-thirds of the lot.
Right.
Yeah.
So it's a relief from your Section 200, 4.2.
Yeah, 200, 4.2.
C.
C subsection 2.
Yeah.
Yeah. And it's loading and parking within that. So, okay, we good with that?
I'll second the motion.
Rob seconds, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Variance is granted. You have a 20-day appeal period after it's been submitted to the clerk. Once the 20 days is up, you got to record the entire variance at the registry of deeds, and then Kurt will take care of you going forward after that.
Thank you so much.
Thanks a lot. Gentlemen, have a nice night.
Okay, thank you very much.
All right, next, Eric and Shannon Dunagan, 2348 Partridge Hill Road. Can you both state your name for the record?
Sure. Eric Dunagan, property owner.
Okay.
Tony Germano, LG Properties, contractor.
Okay. So, would you, like, to tell the board what you're proposing to do and why the board should grant you relief?
Sure thing, thank you. I was back here on December 5th last year requesting a special permit for this project that would allow us to take the roof off of the existing dwelling and then add a second floor to expand the space on the building. And that special permit was granted by this board. In the submission, we included. In the submission, we included the construction drawings and it showed all the components of the build, including the second floor, the same envelope. And then we had a section of the drawings that showed existing deck and proposed deck. The existing deck had extended approximately four feet to the left of the building and then extended another fourteen feet across the backside of the house that's on the water. We did not specifically present to the board that in those construction drawings, we were looking to extend the deck from the left corner of the house to the right corner of the house on the water side. Honestly, all of the conversation was really around the adding of the second floor and its impact to the, to the neighborhood. And it honestly was an oversight. The most significant portion of that seemed to be ensuring that we weren't disturbing traffic patterns, view, views of lake, of the pond. So the, in the construction plan and extending it, the back right corner of the house is twelve point eight five feet from the property line, so it's in the setback area. When you add the four feet or six feet of the deck, you would assume naturally that the corner of that deck would be the same twelve point eight five feet from the property line, but it's not. And it's a combination, ninety-five percent of it is the positioning of the house and then it's the contour of the property line itself. By extending the deck all the way to that right corner, we extend the deck four additional feet into the setback. So then that corner of the new deck on that back right corner is eight feet, eight inches from the property line. We're, we're asking for a variance. Obviously, we have a hardship in, in the case of the way the house is positioned in the, the property line, but we're, we're asking for the variance so that we can extend it. And I would suggest that you, if you think about the, the deck, it's only going to be seen from the water. There's no other impact on the front of the house. By cutting, cutting the, the deck back four feet and extending it, but not to the end of the house, seems a little, honestly, a little ridiculous in the design and, and the aesthetic of that. And the Dunagans are spending so much money in, into this property, you know, we're, we're hoping that we can finish the deck design the way that it was intended and the way that it's designed in the construction drawings. Doesn't interfere with the view from the street, it doesn't encumber pedestrians or vehicles, doesn't fly in the face of the premises that were used in granting the special permit. And so we're humbly asking that you consider allowing us to extend that deck, the full length of that back of the house.
No questions. You have no questions?
No questions.
You have any questions?
No questions.
Does, does the extension of the deck, the property line that you're talking about, the abutter adjacent, will they be able to see that extension of the deck?
No. No, the, the tree cover's too tall, yeah.
My question is, why go all the way out to the end versus just going?
You'd have to see the property, it would make.
Deeper or, you know, instead of saying, you know, how, how wide is the deck you're going to put?
It's the length of the house.
No, no, how, how deep?
How deep is six feet?
So, um, but why go all the way to the end? What, like, is there a door at the end of that?
No, there's, there's no, well, there is a massive glass sliding door that's central.
It's in the middle of the back of the house?
Correct, yeah. You'd have, you'd have to, yeah, so the, if the deck stopped there, I don't know what you'd do, how do you get out of the slider? You just, you jump onto the, like.
Yeah, yeah, that's why I'm asking.
Yeah, you have to.
Why go, why go?
Oh, because the slider's there.
My, my back deck doesn't go all the, all the way back.
Yeah.
Granted, I'm not going to the lake. Yeah, that's why, like, why not go close, a little closer to the lake, then go, you know, wider, go back to the house? I mean, what's the difference?
Yeah, it's the door.
Okay.
The glass sliding door.
Any other questions? Rob, Marco, Gary?
No.
All right. All right, we'll call Kurt Meskis, zoning enforcement officer.
Mr. Chairman Kurt Meskis, Building Commissioner, zoning enforcement officer, if I may, my usual auto lineup. So as the applicant indicated, we were before this board, back in December, project commenced after the issuance of a special permit for the renovations of the house. It was found during construction that, and actually, actually, actually after I issued the building permit, that the deck had not been addressed properly through a variance or through the special permit and that it was going to offend, further offend the setbacks more than the house. Locust photo, picture of the house under construction just taken the other day, followed by a blizzard. And then followed by the picture of the area. So to the left is the property line, it approximately follows the length, or follows the tree line from my understanding and drawings I've seen. You can see the slider that they, they are speaking about that I suspect goes into the living area of the house, but I didn't, didn't look at that. And then a rather small but pertinent drawing showing the house, the proposed deck extending across the blue line there that is the setback line. So as they indicated, the house currently does offend the setback, but because of the orientation of the house on the lot, not parallel to that side lot line, as you extend the deck out, it approaches even further into the setback. Sorry that I didn't realize that, that that was part of the construction plans and much rather has dealt with this during the special permit process than not having the applicant here twice, but things do happen.
Any final questions? Is there any abutters, member of the public, that have any questions, comments, concerns? All right. Anybody from conservation, accountant's office, planning board, town clerk, department, collector, assessor, border health, police, fire, economic development, senior center, water and sewer department? Anybody have any comments, nothing at all? Someone want to close the open portion of this meeting?
Can I ask something real quick?
Yes.
Does this board have the authority to grant a, the twenty-day grace period?
No.
Are we allowed to?
No, no, no. We don't have, we don't, we don't have a, we don't have any, say, that's.
Mandatory.
Period's mandatory.
Gotcha, okay.
So anybody that, if you give an opportunity to anybody who wanted to appeal our decision, you know, can by law.
Okay.
So, yeah, I don't think there's any waiver of that in any way at all.
It's okay.
Yeah, unfortunately.
Okay, that's it.
All right, someone want to, in this open portion?
Make a motion to close the public portion of this meeting?
Second.
The second by Marco, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
I was a little skeptical of this at first, but once I see the picture, it makes complete sense.
Yeah, the house is off.
Yeah. I'm like, yeah, you got it, we got it. I mean, obviously, the hardship is the undersized lot and then the angle of the house to the, to the lot line. I can't read what that corner of the.
I mean, you'd worry about access to the backyard, but it's on such a slope, you ain't getting in there with anything anyway.
No.
It's eight, it's over eight feet, so it's built to fit a vehicle.
Yeah, yeah.
If you could.
Yeah.
Yeah, over the wall, though.
So if we're going to grant a variance, it's from that corner point to the, to the line as shown on the plan, but I can't read what the number is, so it's too small.
So they'll have eight feet, eight inches, so they're going to need six four.
Six four, and then, and then according to the plan, due to the, the location of the structure on the lot and then the shape of this, the shape of the lot itself and grade as well probably.
All right, I'll make the motion if you guys are ready.
Yep.
All right. I motion to grant the variance as requested by the applicant for six feet, four inches of relief from the side yard setback on the, is that the northerly side of the lot? I want to say that's. As shown on the plan. Following to the, the existing footprint of the house already being into the setback and the shape of the lot, so.
Second. The second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries, variance is granted, there's a twenty-day appeal period once it's up. You got to record, make sure you record the whole variance.
We'll do, thank you.
All right.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you, good luck.
Yeah, thanks.
Lastly, we have. David Hall, one ninety-seven Sunset Drive. Would you like to state your name for the record, please?
David Hall, June.
And do you want, tell us what you propose to do and why the board should grant relief?
The layout of my land, I'd like to put a two-car garage, twenty by twenty, without really erupting the walkways that have been built and the full terrain of the land, more or less out of safety from the crazy acorns we get from the giant oaks in my yard and the, where I live on the hill, when you come from the north side of the road, you know, coming south, where my driveway comes out, there's not really a lot of relief where I can, I mean, if somebody's coming that way, they could go right into my driveway. It doesn't happen, but I, it's just making it more safe and storage and. I have a shed there now that's kind of a junky old shed, but of course, I'll get rid of that and I positioned it where I wouldn't block anybody's view of the water, take up. I have some very great neighbors there that I've worked with and I hope they like what I propose. My builder was supposed to come with me today, but he had an emergency, had to fly to Germany to for his son, but I, I don't want to seem ill prepared, but I'm not a builder.
This is the, you're the blue house, right? The blue, your house is blue?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
You're next to the one that was new construction?
Yes.
So I, I did look at it and I looked at every other house on that side of the road, all the way down Sunset, and I was looking also on Glen Echo. And, and my concern is this, is that I don't see another garage that close to the road on either Sunset or Glen Echo. There's a shed here and there on Glen Echo, but most of the garages, if not all of them on any of those lots, they're all, they're all at least, it seems, at least ten to twenty feet off the road or, you know, or constructed, you know, in another way. You know, some of them look like they're, you know, attached to the, to the dwelling and, and set back further, because you're only looking for five feet off of the, off the road and.
Twenty-five foot.
It's just the elevations are so.
And you're only two feet from the property line, too, you're looking for.
Two and a half, I think.
Yeah, which is really, really tight, especially given the slope. It's a, you know, you're almost right on the line with a twenty-by-twenty shed. So, I mean, right off the bat, those two things kind of concern me, like, there's like no other houses that have a garage like that anywhere up and down that road at all. Do you guys have questions? You guys want?
Said my goal was to put something where it wouldn't block anybody's view, would make it safer for, to be able to park off the road and just to have a little bit of space to.
Yeah, I mean, you're, like, you're almost right up on the road on that. This lot next door is the one, remember, they, they had a retaining wall and the floored rights on that side there.
Yeah, that's challenging, isn't it? With the elevation drop.
There's a significant elevation drop on top of that.
Yeah.
Yeah. I mean, you're building two, almost a two-story structure. You'd have something underneath?
There'd be a storage area underneath and then the, the garage and then storage above it.
So you're, you're almost going to have a three-story garage?
No, it will be two, but it did, I mean, it could, it could just be foundation and filled into it in the bottom. I'm just looking for something where I could park a lawnmower or something, because I said, even the twenty-by-twenty with two cars in it, I really wouldn't, you know, if I can, if I could make, I don't know, I guess like, if they're almost like a crawl space, you know, just to be able to put a lawnmower in a circle, you know?
With the slope, you'd almost have to. There's, there's quite a drop on that.
Right.
Yeah. Yeah, I, I, I'm definitely concerned about that, you know, like I said, none of all the houses on Sunset Drive have a garage like this at all. Like, I looked at every single front, you know, all the way down and like.
I promise you, I will look, I didn't.
Yeah, really good.
I know there are a few garages, but I am not going to.
It seemed like every other one was at least like ten or twenty feet off of the road or was like attached to the main structure in some way and set back a little bit more. I mean, I don't know how many were two-car garages versus, I know there was one three-car garage a little bit further down from you, but that would look like it was at least twenty-five feet off of the road. And some of the, a lot of them that had garages.
Are you going north or south?
I went both ways.
All right.
I went.
You're going down the water, right?
There's not much more you can go for.
You're going down the water, right? And what's such?
Yeah, and I went down the other end and I was just looking at every single house.
Yeah.
And like, none of them have that so close to the road and it's definitely like, I, your, your position to the, to the side, sideline there is like very, very close to the line and, and then just to the front, it's very, very close to the front setback, to the, to the road as well. Yeah, I, I don't know what you guys think about it, that's what I think.
Yeah, it's, it doesn't seem to fit at all, but there's not even a portion of this that's within the setback area.
You're going deeper than that, yeah? Yeah, for frost, yeah.
Jason, Karen, Marco, you have any questions, comments right now?
I think the biggest thing is the conformity to the neighborhood. You're, you got a chance to go down there.
Well, I, I looked up, you know.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, if you guys want to do that as well, I just, I just, you know, I love, I get some of it on Google Maps and, you know.
I mean, is there a reason that it's not closer to the house? You know, I mean.
It was just, from doing one survey to my builder, they explained that, you know, you asked for this and we'll see if, this is the best, the most economical place we can build it. And, and I don't know if it shows my walkway that goes down, they, the owner before me built a beautiful walkway to railing and I was trying to put it where I could put it and not block anybody's view and not erupt that rock, walkway, you know? I didn't want to wreck what was nice and the hole in the land there. I mean, it's, and they would explain that the farther back, the bigger that concrete wall is going to be, you know, the, the foundation. And that's, that's why they, why my architect and the builder chose to put it there, because they said this is, you know, this is, you know, you'd have to, you know, get a permit, but it's. this is, you know, you'd have to, you know, get a permit, but it's, it can be done this way, and the, and the wall won't be, um, I, 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 sorry, I'm not a builder, I don't know, you know, the, how big the concrete wall is gonna be.
It's pretty much the same grade behind it and in front of it, you still have a problem with the side. So the foundation size is still gonna be the same, whether you're there or back another twenty-five feet.
I mean, I could erupt the, you know, take the walkway out and build a, the guy, there's a guy down the street from me on Glen Echo, that has four car garage, but he has it under.
Oh, really?
Yeah, he has it under, and then two above, and then an attic on top of that.
Yeah, yeah.
And in fact, it's a beautiful home. It's, um, it's not a big home, it's kinda like mine, but with a four-car garage in front of it, I didn't really wanna put a four-car garage, I just wanted relief from the street, and just a place where my cars won't... I can show you the hood of my car up there, anybody in the neighborhood, you can't even park on the road, 'cause the acorns just destroy your car, you know? I know you can get maybe an awning or something for that, but...
Lot of acorns this year.
Serious business.
Alright, do we wanna hear from the zoning enforcement officer?
Yeah.
Mr. Mescus?
Uh, good evening, Kurt Mescus, building commissioner, zoning enforcement officer, if I may, my usual set of handouts, I'll give the application to you. I didn't give enough, let me know.
One more.
Alright, I have another one. Okay, I'm sorry. Uh, so as usual, the, the photo away is, we know that this is Glen Echo Lake, and we have lots of lots on Glen Echo Lake that are pre-existing, non-deforming, fifty, sixty, thirty feet wide, and five thousand or so areas. Um, so we have the, uh, locust map on the top, we have a view of the, uh, house from the top of the walkway that the applicant mentions, we have a view, an earlier view from a previous time that I was there of, uh, looking up from the house, uh, to the retaining wall, that is its current parking area, and the newly constructed, uh, stairway, um, a view from the parking area to the house, and showing the shed that the applicant indicates that he's gonna remove. Couple pages stuck together here. A, a view from a little bit south, uh, showing the approximate pro-, um, property line indicated, um, there, the stairway, uh, that's shown there out of stone belongs to the neighbor at one eighty-seven Sunset. Um, looking towards, um, the, across the front of the, the property, um, showing that, uh, showing the, uh, houses to the right, um, of one ninety-nine and two oh-three Sunset, and then showing one eighty-seven Sunset, the neighbor's property, and as the chairman has indicated, uh, the property belongs to the Spewax, who this board took action a number of years ago to allow them to, uh, remodel the garage into a dwelling unit, and it has that, um, bunkhouse or beach house, or whatever it is, uh, on the lake that we, we struggled with. Um, and then a photo of the house across the street.
Which, which photo is this? That's two oh-three, that they did the bunkhouse?
The, uh, one eighty-seven is the one with the bunkhouse down, or the beach house, or cabana, or whatever it is, um...
That's a couple of houses down.
No, it's next door.
Is it next door?
Directly next door. So, um, I have, I have Haji over this proposal. He's asking to be two and a half feet off the property line, when he spoke to me during our early conversations about it, and then showed me the plan, I says five feet, I mean, that, that, that's a reasonable number. The other issue that comes into play is if the building is not located five feet off the property line, not a zoning issue, but a building code issue, that wall, that is less than five feet, or five feet or less to the property line, has to have a one-hour fire rating, both from the interior and the exterior. So that, that will be a challenge, and it also includes having to deal with the overhang, so no vinyl siding on that side, non-combustible materials, um, it, it's gonna be, um, an issue. Um, and as this board, uh, can decide whatever they want, has, has, and I advise the applicant that the, the minimum number generally accepted is five feet. But the, uh, chair pointed out, we're also asking to be only five feet from the street, uh, the required setback is thirty feet from the street, um, much closer than any other building that we have ever, you know, allowed to the street setback. He did make mention of a house down the street that's a four-car garage, yes, that was pushed back as far as it could be from the street. It, uh, has an over-under operation, this, uh, this lot lends itself to that.
Yeah.
Uh, it's a construction issue, of whether or not he's going to build a four-sided foundation and fill it in with lots of dirt,
Yeah.
or, and compact it, or there's a potential that some sort of slab, suspended slab could be built, that he could gain the storage area under there. Um, that, but that would be in the discussion that he would have to have with his builder.
Yeah.
I, I very rarely speak against applications, um, I find that this is, is difficult.
Alright, any other questions right now, wanna call, um, we call, um, any abadus wanna come and speak up? Members of the public, anybody? For or against, nothing, okay?
Yeah, I, I do, I, I have a concern.
Can you come up and just, uh, state your name for the record and address as well?
Hey, David. Name's Steve Levine, uh, one ninety-eight Sunset Drive, I'm in the house directly, uh, in front of, uh, Mr. Hall's.
There's a picture of it on.
Yep, the one on the hill.
Yeah.
So the street's narrow, uh, there's not much room, uh, I'm just concerned that, uh, during construction, if you do a- agree to allow, uh, Mr. Hall to, uh, to build this, there's no staging area. So, uh, there is some open area right in front of my house, and I'm concerned that that's gonna be the staging area. Uh, I use it for parking, we use it for company, the neighbor next to us uses it for parking, uh, with that used as a staging area, it's gonna create a hardship for several people on, on the street.
Right, right. Alright, well, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Yeah. Alright. Do we have any more questions for the applicant at all?
I have a question for Kurt regarding the setback, if it was five feet with the one-hour prior rating, would be no longer a building issue?
At five feet or less, so it'd have to be more than five feet, you know, so five foot one, but I would also have to consider, um, what impact and how the, any overhang on that side is considered in that, that's why I provided, um, the commentary's drawing there for that.
Well, right now, the way this looks, I would not be for this at all. I don't, what do you guys think?
I agree, uh, it's too big, too close to the road.
Yeah, I think it's just too close to the road, it, it's, it's like, if it's a thirty-foot setback, you're looking for twenty-five foot variance on that, and then, you know, the side variance as well, at two feet, um, and granted, he's got a lot of slope, but I, I, like, i- if that's spot, I don't think that, that it makes sense to grant a variance for something like that.
Yeah, if there was some portion of it that was within the setback, and it was expanding into the setback zone for, um, some amount of space, so that you could accommodate some specific thing.
Yeah.
Uh, that would be one thing, but just the entire structure being completely outside.
Yeah, it's just, yeah.
I think, I, I find myself in agreement with, with specifically the proximity to the street.
Yeah.
Uh, with the five feet, um...
You're talking about a lake road, you know, who knows, you know, they're typically a little bit more narrow to begin with, and, um, you know, you're looking at, you can't, you couldn't even park a car outs- in front of the garage, outside the garage and all of that.
And there'd be no, there'd be no way to back out of it, out of the garage, without backing correctly onto the street.
Into the street, yeah, yeah.
I mean, it makes, I can see where it makes sense from a builder's perspective, because it's already built up in that location.
Yeah, yeah.
But you're pointing, you'd have to do a lot more work.
Right, but you know, if you look at, if you look on that, like, this, especially in that part of the road there, like, the slope down to the lake is pretty substantial, so most of the houses have, like, that parking area above, in the camp or the house at a lower level, but there's like three or four houses at least in that, and then where the garages are on that road, the, the lot seem a little bit more level than most, like, any house that has that slope, there's not much.
I have, I have a question as well.
Yeah.
Have you, have you ever considered, like, a carport?
Um...
Is, is, is it just the acorns that you're...
Well, it's, it's the whole idea with, um, you know, just to have a little bit more space to put, just to make the, it, it'd give me, you know, just more land, I mean, to use, you know, it's, it, that slope is, um, 'cause I, you know, I said, I, I'll have to talk to my builder, my, my, doing the land survey, but I understood it was gonna, the garage was gonna be, like, where the, um, where that parking space is built now, the garage was gonna start there, I thought that, you know, I thought that's the way he explained it to me.
They're showing it five feet off the road, there's no way, yeah.
You almost, if, if you centered it on the property and moved it back, you still could accommodate the same thing, you just have to...
Just, now, now, but, so technically, my car's in the street, right here, then, property line, is that, am I reading that right?
Yeah.
Yeah, it might be.
That, that prop, that line is, is trying to approximate the location of the side of the lawn.
Right. But like I said, my car's technically parked in the street then.
No, no, he's not talking about the...
I was just, just wanna look at that line.
He's talking about the between your lot and the lot next door, that's, that's a sideline, not the front line.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, he's not talking about that.
It is possible that his car is within the right of way.
Yeah.
However, every driveway in the town of Charlton, it's lost its right of way.
That's why, actually, this is my first experience at Charlton, so I'm trying to figure out, you know, where the...
And, and, like, we're not looking to, you know, but this, this doesn't make sense to us to grant relief on something like this, in, in any way.
Yeah.
So, um...
I think if you centered it a little bit, moved it back...
Yeah, so we could do a couple of things, if you wanted to withdraw, but you'd have to petition all over again.
Right.
If you wanna go back to your builder and see, maybe you wanna put it in a different place, and try to resubmit a new plan to us, and we can, when do we have to make a decision on this by?
Yes.
From the application, from the petition?
December first.
So we would go, we could go to the next meeting, if you wanted to go back to your builder and talk to your builder, um, and see if maybe there's another location that you could do with it, but, like, I don't think...
Go back to the Lincoln Land Survey, 'cause they're the ones who...
Yeah, and I think that, if, if, the third option is, is that we could take a vote tonight, and, you know, do all that, and, um, but my feeling is, is you'd get denied, and then you can't reapply for two years after that, if you moved into a vote, so, um, the, the, and, do I get, you, if you wanna withdraw and just come back at another time, or something like that, but you'd have to file a petition all over again. So if we continue, it's to the next meeting, and then at the next meeting, we, you would, if, if what you have, we don't, it's not gonna work for us still, your option would be either we take a vote up or down, or if you're not here, we would take a vote up or down, and then, or if you wanted to withdraw, you could withdraw, so...
Okay.
If you, you know...
Was it even I, if I moved it back and over, like, you're saying?
Yeah, and, like, you know, look, from my perspective is, is that you're, like I said, you're five feet off the road, there's, there's a thirty-foot setback in the town, that means that buildings should be built thirty feet back, and y- your problem is, is that you gotta camp lot, I mean, they're all like this.
Yeah.
They're all small, in all honesty, like, none of these are meant really, you know, originally for garages, and you're, you know, you're on a lake...
Trust me, I'm thrilled with the parking space I have here. The guy who built it this one, you can't be sure.
Yeah, and, and I'm not saying that it, you know, shouldn't or couldn't or whatever, but, you know, I don't think that was originally when they developed these lots, that was the idea that you were gonna have, you know, two-car garages and the whole thing on there, so, um, if it wasn't in a location that made more sense, then, you know, certainly, um, I don't think the board would be opposed, and if you wanna continue till the next meeting, um, but at the very least, the two things that really, too close to the prop, the sideline, and way too close to, to, to the front line.
Am I, no, I don't know if I'm breaking protocol here, but would, like, what would you be looking for? Like, fifth, over five feet, ten feet, that, like, what would you consider reasonable? Is that something I could even ask with this board? I don't know, you know, I mean...
I mean, I, I would start inside the area that you're allowed to build, and then work your way as little outside that zone as possible.
Alright, but the, the whole idea of this proposal was, less wall, not to block anybody else's view, and to, um, and to not erupt that rock, that walkway, you know, and, and, I know, it could be, certainly, it could be moved, I mean...
And, and I, I'm just looking at the other houses on your road, and all of them are, even, even though the detached garages are way further back, and I think part of your problem is, is that none of those garages that exist are on the type of slope that you're on, like, none of the houses that seem to have that slope also have a garage on it, you know?
Right.
It seems fair that we, I mean, I'm just thinking, I wanna see enough room to park the car on the, on the lot, not in the garage.
Yeah. But that would be more than a car length probably, though, at least.
Yeah, it would take probably twenty feet, I would think, from the street, right?
Yeah.
That, that's what I'd...
It definitely wouldn't go on this side of the lot, I can tell you, you know, 'cause it's just too steep, I sit there, yeah. But, and even, you know, the answer, you can ask whatever, you know, but...
They'll put whatever you want on that, you know?
But you'll get a feel of what they want, uh, what is reasonable.
Right. And maybe they come back and say, I don't know, like, yeah, I would talk with them, maybe they can do it, maybe they can't, I don't know, I don't know.
Yeah.
But, do you, would you, are you, are you asking for us to continue to the next meeting on this?
Well, I think you've given me a pretty good hint to do that, I appreciate that.
Okay, so are you requesting a continuance to the next meeting?
Yes.
Okay, so there's a motion to contin- continue to the next meeting?
I'll make a motion to continue.
The attorney makes a motion to continue, second of the motion?
Second.
Jason, seconds, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, so we'll, we're not gonna republish it and make that for the next meeting, the day they'll just tell you when the next meeting is, it'll be sometime in November.
Okay.
Um, if, if you're not here or whatever, we'll vote, and then... If, um, if it doesn't work, you can always make a request to withdraw, even between now and our next meeting, if it looks like it's just not gonna be doable in any way, and then we can just motion to withdraw, um, and then if your builder or your surveyor can come up with a different plan, that's, the, the board is willing to at least entertain that under this petition. Alright?
Thank you.
Good luck.
Thanks.
We'll see you next month.
I just wanna thank the town of Charlton, I've built in Auburn, Worcester, and everybody in the town, all everybody's helped as much as they possibly could, I appreciate that.
Yeah.
You didn't take a vote.
We... You know, we have to make a vote on that, we didn't vote on it, all in favor, say aye.
Either way, just to be said.
I definitely said aye, I don't know.
All fans.
You doing minutes next, or do we need to set the date?
Um, well, we, we're waiting for two other things to come in.
Alright.
So there's an application that just came in, and I think there's gonna be another one in a few days.
Okay.
So it'll probably be sometime in November, uh, probably like the day before Thanksgiving, is good for you?
Yeah, that's right. That's me out of a lot of baking.
Be unavailable from Monday till January.
I already told her that.
I'll be hunting.
Um, so, um, we have the minutes from the last meeting? Does anyone make, uh, make a motion on the minutes from last meeting, and want any comments from it?
Uh, I didn't see them.
Yeah, she emailed up to you the other day, uh...
Ah, well, then I definitely didn't see him.
Hey, you wanna take a look at any?
Yeah.
What does November look like?
Cold, dark?
I'm traveling for Thanksgiving, so...
To the end of the state. We won't do a Thanksgiving week.
I'm away the week before.
You're away the week before? You're away the week before that?
Yep.
Uh, I'm good on the nineteenth.
The nineteenth's the week before Thanksgiving.
When are the elections in November?
I will contact you guys.
I'll go out here and read the signs.
It's the first.
It's gonna be a good Thanksgiving for me.
It's the fifth. We've already run into that once, we didn't even know.
So, that, that gives us the twelfth and the nineteenth. And one of them is probably a select board meeting.
I mean, we could always do the week after Thanksgiving too, cause Thanksgiving's the third week in the month this year, isn't it?
No, it's, it's the twenty-eighth.
All right, I make a motion to accept the minutes.
Okay, is there a second on the motion?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion. Thanksgiving's on the third, third, it's the third week, isn't it?
It's late, isn't it?
No, I thought it was early this year.
Yeah, it's the twenty-eighth.
No, it's like the, is it?
Yeah.
Twenty-something.
Gives me an extra week about.
Yep, Thanksgiving's the twenty-eighth, yeah.
So, we could do the nineteenth and that's the week before, we just can't do the twenty-sixth then.
But I'm gone that week.
You're going the nineteenth.
Yep.
What about the twelves?
I'm fine that week.
That's, Veterans Day is on the eleventh.
Uh, November's tough for me, until after Thanksgiving and then it's December.
Uh, should we motion to close?
Yeah, wanna motion to end the meeting tonight?
Yeah.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
A second.
We don't.
Last second.